Purchase, tax code for District One. Doesn't sound like our pretty faces.
Do you, uh?
I told you I'm making this for the long meeting.
Glad he's running the meeting. I figured I had it.
Didn't matter.
You get a pair of big one over there. Uh-huh, she's already signed a purchase order. So now is the finance contracts, financing this at the Bank of Del Carte, and the best interest rate. So.
When they come in?
Uh, two and a half. If I can get each one of you guys to sign that right there.
Personally, it works.
She'll need to sign it and stamp it. Most everything else is, uh, after your emerger list gets the payments for thirty-five, sixteen, fifty, Jay?
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you. If I could just have you sign the bottom of that emergrization schedule there. I don't know why they didn't have you sign that by after the big sign. This is the notice to consent and assign that says that you're gonna make your payments to Community National Bank at Del Carte and not the Yellow House. Sign down there at the bottom of there.
Yeah, just one on that one.
This is the certificate of acceptance, all three of you will sign that. And that's for, says that you'll have an insurance, I'll write the insurance you guys through Akko, right?
Yes.
I'll write that on there for the bank, you'll need to call Akko to get that. This is a, this just says that this is a tax exempt entity, if I have you sign that down there, Jay.
Trust console, he just signs wherever he's telling him, huh?
Yeah, yeah. The DA already signed it.
What is going on here?
Uh, this initials right there says that the bank's gonna be calling, requesting a copy of that. And that's all there is. DA's already signed it. I'll go into your office and make your copy, Jay, do you want a copy taken back from the barn?
This office.
This office needs three copies.
I move for the approval of this lease purchase. All in favor?
Thank you all very much. I'll get you that copy of that, that, uh, that contract.
Oh, they'll need it at the barn.
They'll just need it at the barn.
I don't need a copy of it, but we gotta make sure that we have a copy of that with them. Because if there was a purchase order, you know, if we're like saying us buying it off a state contract, then I would need it with the purchase order. But where it's leased purchased, then they'll need a copy of it with them.
Okay, okay, I'll get it for you.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much, I'll get the copy from Aiden.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Now we're ready.
He's coming towards the bridge when he was meeting all Phil, said, "Why, he said, 'Dad, I think we'd better switch real quick.'"
Well, at least he said that.
Yeah, he got a little nervous on that, I'm like, "Okay, buddy." I move for the approval, second.
All in favor?
The thing about my kids, they shouldn't have trouble finding a job, they've got experience and everything.
Pretty well.
Oh, boy. Little stack of them.
They know what's happening.
He's bailing that little patch of feed hay for Tim Hagen, I was like, "Colby bailed," I was sitting there talking to him, looking, he's bailing it. I was like, "This is the way to do it."
'Cause when they get to be about sixteen, you might not get them there.
Yeah. Yeah. I think they already do.
Yeah.
Colby got his phone taken from him, I had to go pick his phone up at school the other day.
Oh. Uh-oh.
Act like you're lucky, son, it's me and not your mother showing up.
I bet you didn't shed your mud there, we're not in it.
No, you're gonna have to find something else to drive time to get to be sixteen, because everybody on hand is pissed, they don't care about this no more.
I know. Do you know, honestly, like Colby run the bailer, he pays better attention. He, um, just been so young, I just think he does a better job.
Did your secretary tell you that we're thinking about coming out? Wednesday?
Well, thank you, today and Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, just making sure. And did you ever talk to anybody in our office?
I called down there and I got a voicemail, but I was gonna call again this week.
Okay.
But then, uh, somebody said y'all aren't open on Fridays this year or something.
Not everyone.
Not this, well, this Friday's open.
This Friday's open, yeah.
No, no, but it is on a regular Friday, that's the matter.
Well, our, our manager's there at least half of the morning on Saturday typically. I mean, on Friday.
Okay.
On Friday, she's there.
Well, I got a, it may, I don't even know what time it was, but I called down there, now it's getting close to election, I called down there and it's Friday and then I got a voice recording, so I was gonna call back today.
You called, um...
Seven, seven, two, thirteen, twelve.
Okay.
Yeah. I wanna be able to tell her.
Um, and you guys have a meeting next Tuesday, right?
Monday.
Monday.
Oh, yeah, that's better, it stays on a Friday, okay. So, can we schedule yours the following, a week from tomorrow?
Four o'clock, it's early.
Okay, all right.
We got a meeting in the city Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah, Akko, this week.
This week, Akko.
So is that gonna be a problem for you, for us to do the barn while you're not there?
Since I'm drunk.
I probably won't be there, but...
Is that gonna be a problem for you, would you rather us wait?
I'd rather you wait myself.
Okay, we can do that.
We can handle it.
Okay, so would you rather do Wednesday of the following week then?
That'd probably work fine.
Okay, so you Tuesday, you Wednesday, right? And then you'll talk to Jerry.
Yeah, a week from tomorrow, right?
A week from tomorrow.
Somebody write that down, please.
And there's no forms or nothing, I have to fill out to do this, just contacting her does it?
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Well, it'd be nice, 'cause we'll have the selection over tomorrow, so I'll know who's called to come with us.
There you go.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yours is in your, your office, that's yours for the barn, and I left yours for your desk.
Lay hers on the desk, I laid hers on her desk, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't need any.
Might be good reading.
Hey, did your house shake?
Yeah.
Mine did some.
We feel all the time.
You seem to feel them all the time, I don't feel well.
Not a big deal.
Not a big deal?
What is your liking, Dan?
Yeah, so you all become normal instead of...
So you're those who...
Yeah, with the cushion, you know, you got a lot of oil down there.
Yeah.
I mean, do you know the cushion, honey's up here and cushioning down here, we're right straight in line, so...
Would you secretly wanna be on in here with your office?
I, I thought about that, pretty seriously.
Nice thing about it, you'll know what they're looking for.
Yeah. And we've got everything ready for the weekend.
It's not right, you can play on your practice sets, sir. If it's not right, you can play on your practice sets, sir.
Has, has anybody met the guys? No? The new guy, whatever his name is?
Riley.
How's he?
Very quiet.
So Cory just moved up the ladder, or?
Cory's still here right now, they haven't switched him, um, they're switching him to DA's and EMS. And they're switching Sherry. So, we'll have a new supervisor, whatever.
What's she going to do?
I don't know if she's going with Cory or what she's gonna do, I've never been told what she's gonna do.
Which one's the supervisor?
Sherry.
Merrill?
Yeah.
There hasn't been any, I need to sign down below, Heather.
I'm gonna watch them.
Thank you.
So, um, Cory's here right now, who's gonna help, Valerie and I do some stuff.
Wonder who's gonna come out and do our barn stuff?
I'm assuming if it's gonna all be next week, then it will be, choose it as one per barn, isn't just one of them coming out? I hope it'll be Riley. Cause Riley's just, Riley's gonna do with, um, with this branch. So, I'm sure it won't be him, but he's gonna announce some stuff from us.
I'll be the one to put her in jail, so don't worry about it.
No, it's just gonna be interesting, see, I'll go having a different one, 'cause you know, we had such different comments last year on...
Major County, I apologize, Major County wrote up for the invoice that the auditor's office sent them.
Really?
Can I take it up?
Uh-uh.
I didn't take it up.
Man, what's the auditor office sending?
The auditor's office sent them an invoice and Major County Clerk's office got wrote up because there was not enough information on...
The invoice?
The invoice that the auditor's office sent them, and she's like, "Why am I able to..."
Yeah.
So she called...
Because they're gonna say it's your duty to ask for more.
She called, um, the Capitol, she called down there and said, "This is not right." Then she got wrote up because a vendor on their invoice did not put a date on it, and she says, "Again, I cannot tell them how to send their invoice." "I have to make sure that my information is on there that I need," but she says, "You're not making put a date on it."
Well, see, um...
Not very happy.
Cory, last year, at my barn, um, all my equipment's marked perfectly, but the tractors, we had black stickers on the windows. And he said, "I want them changed to a different color because the black blends in with the floorboard when you're setting at angles and stuff." He said, you know, "That's how picky was." He goes to Tony's, they don't even have them attached, they have a paper in the window, which actually doesn't follow statute, and they don't say nothing to him about it.
Right.
It's like...
You just look like you're a culprit, that's what it is.
No. But, you know, my argument is I meant the statute. It is marked, it has the district number, it has county, it has the inventory number, it's clearly marked on both sides, which statute says. You know, saying the color isn't right is just getting a little picky, which I changed them, no problem. I'm like, "Didn't you go to District Three and don't say nothing?" They just got papers in the window that's not even attached, and it clearly says in statute, "Must be attached on both sides and clearly visible." Which like Colby said, also to score it off, 'cause you're not proving wrong, you're last year.
That's what I'm thinking.
So he was just looking.
And the whole thing is, I think that they have to do something, or it looks like they're not doing their job, you know what I mean?
Sure, sure, but that's getting pretty bad when you're like, "I mean..."
Writing her up, part of the invoice, I think, say "Auditor" or something, I thought, "No." It's like, "Why don't you slap yourself?"
Yeah.
What's her name?
Uh, Major Kim?
I know her, what's her name?
Kathy McClure.
Yeah, I bet she wasn't allowed that much either.
Oh, yeah, she was, I called her for something else and she was still out about it.
Yeah, when I get to do it with all the water in my culmination room, they wrote me up on having a half a bar of hand soap. And I totally got it, "There's a half a bar there, plenty." I can't write you, I've gotta deduct some points if they're coming inspect me for not doing my job. Okay, took two points off, but they had a half a bar of hand soap.
Oh, I'm sure I'll get something this time.
I'm sure I'll get more than that, if he wasn't know my feeling.
Why, so Doug, I was the first one he was put in jail, Robert Plon said, "Would you quit telling Doug that, he's getting worried."
And you were wrong, he went to jail before you did.
Yeah, he did, didn't he? On that part, yeah.
I was waiting for that to come.
No, I didn't went to jail before either, 'cause I went to jail twenty years ago. What's the date?
Seven.
Did they tell you our football score? I seen it on Friday night, quick scores. Their football team averages more than the basketball team.
Uh-uh.
Your big boy moved the ring with him, didn't he?
Yep.
What I heard.
Best thing ever happened.
Who's that?
Uh, Jeremiah Decker.
Decker, yeah, I think he's...
But if he goes, if he gets to play, I think we're gonna holler and roll out him. He just left last week, checked himself out, but his dad's supposed to deal is, his dad is losing his eyesight and Triggy's moving down there. He played at the Triangle, but...
This one's our fault.
Patterson all summer.
Really?
See Mrs.? Mrs. Patterson, she said, "I would like to complain, but there's somebody my son's size."
Cherokee will have that.
Let's go to the table.
Get everybody healthy.
Probably still out.
They think he's gonna be able to play basketball, I'm not quite...
He goes back, the Birmingham call up, forces graders up there? Yeah, back here. Oh, the car wash? Looking around, you park somebody for taking the grade of the car wash?
No, the, the ticket got lost. So much coffee, the ticket.
Jared got hurt fighting, right?
Did he?
Took it home and wrecked his hip, like hip, ribs, I guess, and, you know, he's in a car ride here.
Sell, did you say sell?
Yes.
So you can run up and down those...
Who were playing?
Really?
Hell of a run, game's over.
What happened to the whole thing, we're gonna chop this district up and play different opponents and all that?
Boy, it may, you know, you gotta, you know, gotta win one game in the district, playoffs.
I know, but...
How could, how about Comas, well... It's never like scrimmage while Comas, they didn't think they was anything.
Cherokee, I mean, that's how close Cherokee was, Cherokee took it to overtime.
Yeah.
Should've won that game.
Should've. How about Comas beat Garver, usually Harvin had that.
It feels weird when you're district champion, six and four, though. I mean, we used to win R and B, used to have Morrison and Pioneer, and went back in their heydays when they were good, had cash in and... I, I remember one year, when I was in school, our four district teams, we didn't make the playoffs, the four district teams were the four semifinalists. Yeah. Man, you can be the fifth best team in our district and not make the playoffs and also be the fifth best in the state. Realistically, now we're in a group where we're six and four as the champions.
So how did, why did they put those up out of wonder, made it to five team victories, what was their, what was...
More money? Oh, I was gonna say, it'd be a lot more money off of that team.
Yeah. What I was wondering. Relieved in the courtroom.
What?
Reflekted in the courtroom.
Oh.
Thought you'd sign it down here, okay.
Yeah.
Eleven, seven, should be seven, eleven. They weren't, they weren't marked, what is that?
That's what I can't...
Yeah, we can take it back to seven, eleven, sixteen, no, not a problem.
Oh, yeah, let's just do that, they already had one anyhow, they didn't...
I was just saying, we got to chat longer than that. Probably than a month and a half.
Yeah, to change the time again.
Come on, Chad.
He suggested it was only, it's only July.
It's time for you to face. You still have Jay and Toby here.
I hate much.
And they are, they are learning.
Maybe, maybe.
They are learning by leaps and bounds, I know they are.
They may, uh, they have a book of us being jailed, they, they still have them here, just maybe locked up.
Well, we didn't say which floor they'd be on, but they'll still be here.
Well, they could bring us up for a meeting.
And we're not changing the colors, and we'll be all dressed out of orange, and I'll be so happy.
Have they done with your audit yet, Seaman? You gotta be careful.
I'll be with him also, I wish they weren't changing the colors.
We're gonna have, we just have them waiting down in jail.
You know, honestly, Kevin, everyone's making a good push here at the end.
He is, ain't he?
He is knocking doors and...
Yeah.
I forgot about...
You guys had to do the whole county, you thought you'd do that the last month?
No, no, kinda.
Just gonna have a good chance to get the Carmen, Allee, and all that area too.
Well, remember in mine, I'm what got the small percentage of Cherokee, Carmen and Allee can actually outvote Cherokee District Two.
That's right.
People don't think that, 'cause they always think Cherokee's been so much bigger. But there's, District One has twice as many votes of Cherokee as District Two does.
And all Toby has to do is go to the prison.
Yeah.
And he's got the conscience.
Yeah.
Second vote.
So we have one conference meeting, he's done for the year.
Yeah.
You all want to take some time off or something, aside? Vote for me?
Yes.
That's probably Hillary's move.
Well, they can't vote.
They can't vote.
It's not working here.
No.
There.
Oh. Huh, I couldn't even have a sign up there. Must've missed it.
I must've missed it.
It's all right. Yeah, Frisick could outvote Cherokee.
And they're all, they'll show up to vote, they're all locked in there.
Yeah, I know, they won't be...
I'm saying just tell them, you know, think of someone they love or something.
There's a bunch of them out there.
I wouldn't give it to Kevin for working so hard at the end, I'm... Honestly, he did not think he was gonna do that.
I didn't either, but I was surprised when I heard it.
No, no, I'm not saying I'm supporting him, but I'm saying, saying he is working hard down the stretch and...
I was surprised.
I'm never the approval.
Daggone.
All in favor? When I heard he was a, uh, campaigner, doing door, door, uh...
Yeah, he's working hard, and has pretty good speech, he gave it to me, and I was like, "I think I'll do it for him."
Yes.
District One. And the Fair Board.
You want to watch parking anywhere, Mark?
Just need to sign it.
I'll be in Norman, top. Kevin, uh, stands like, and then panel, it's in Arizona. That's what I mean, that's what I mean, Kevin's making a push and not too smart, that's...
All set trap.
Dancing, it's those, dancing.
I'll make it most improved.
Daggone.
All in favor?
I'll change after the coverage, what if I turn to...
Appropriations. Are they up, down, in between?
Down.
County meetings?
Yeah.
What?
Sign it right here.
I want one more month of appropriations for me.
She, she can't, she was going to do that.
Yes!
Finally getting rid of him.
Yes.
You mean you're gonna have a retirement party?
No, I just wanna go out quietly, I just wanna disappear.
See how that goes.
Go, I mean, cut me a couple.
That's where they sold some stuff.
Oh, I should, okay.
He brought all that stuff up to me also.
No, maybe, I reminded him the other day.
I had to call again, I still didn't have it, and I brought it out, and I answered. Josh was at the end of the office, and I said, "Hi, colleague, do you want to go on any of this?" I started, "Yeah." She just brought it up, didn't they? I got it.
She's got some work to do with the girls up there, huh? Up at Brownington.
Yeah.
Has some potential, but, she's got some potential, but, just peanut pepper that wants to work.
Oh, they do.
The difference between Flatman and the, the before was that little black girl later on, for one time, that was it. Kelsey played real well, Cross played super good, for definitely, of course, Animal Dick is still a freshman, just...
He had some good moments, and some...
She did, and she, there at the last, she come to relax and started playing ball a little better. Oh, they did, all right, they beat them ten, I hear.
Could've did five.
Uh, several of them. Some really much improved from last year.
They had, I think, a couple three-point shooters.
Yeah, yeah. Now, are you willing listening? Wouldn't be lucky to get out there, it's out there getting guard feathered.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they'll meet you.
So, uh, then I got to decide, do I wanna go watch Cherokee Laverne game? Or Laverne, or Cherokee, or Laverne?
That's pretty easy on ya.
Got time, most of these.
I'll probably go up to the Laverne again, it's the closest garage.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I always will have Cherokee Laverne.
Yeah, gonna be a run rate when we come home, didn't we?
I drink the, the place, I hear a little closer than that, but...
Also was when, uh...
I got the, um...
Jared went down, or what? Something happened earlier this year, Jared went down the ceiling, gave him this Laverne game, so he went down, they got, I hear they got this Laverne game again. That stink is a senior too, not just your last game.
I thought Seating could play a little better.
They lost one of their really good, quarterback, or...
Passes? I don't, we need to get that on the end of them.
Yes. We gotta do a resolution on the percentages of EMS, fire departments.
Oh, okay.
I have a copy of that, that barn's, where there's a down, so I can just change the percentage.
Got your whole story again?
Yeah.
Yeah, news grab with credit. Haven't really heard much comment on it.
Good. I've had a few people call. And the sales tax, I'll be cool.
I've had several call, mentioned, man, you did well.
I haven't had you call...
Four, three dollars a night, I sense.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't had a call, but I've been telling her, "But you need to vote for our sales tax." And it's just the same as it was, you've been paying for four years, put up a dollar, that's the way it can exist.
Daggone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Martin Howard expenditures. Do you not listen? And this is where they would credit.
It'd be a long, I would think, like, property.
Yeah. Yeah, it was too long, but you know how many things we actually cut out?
That's what, and that's what I'm just like, we get, we get.
That's what several people said, you know, I read the whole thing, and it was very self-explanatory.
It was very self.
Well, and, and when you throw some of the peoples off, I move for the approval. Second, cause like, when you start talking about the ambulance percentages, percentage of the fifty-two percent, you know, that is confusing.
Exactly. Yes, it is.
Like, they're getting sixty-six percent, no, they're getting sixty-six percent of the fifty-two percent.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
He said that the head of the Republican Party had called him, and told him, Sharon, vote for no, because we didn't need more taxes. So he knew better, so he went and he voted, and he came back, and he was, he was pretty mad, because his ballot read, he felt like, it didn't state that it wasn't a new tax, and that was.
The ballot can't state, though, I mean, it just says it's.
He didn't think that it had fire department, and then, then I directed him to your article, and the next day he told him, said, that was a really good article, we should've came out the week before.
Oh, Matt Morse has stated it.
I'm just telling him.
Honestly, I should've had it done a long time ago, I just was, that night is the middle of the night, I'm sitting there, I was telling Jennifer this, things I want, she's typing it for me, we're going through this, and I mean.
And you edited in your suite, didn't you?
This was two or three o'clock in the morning, when we actually did that article. I fell asleep in the middle, she had to wake me up at one point.
You fell asleep, yeah.
Did she slap you? Wake me up, make me do this.
Well, Matt Morse.
No, it's true, it's.
You couldn't really run it too early, because I'd be worried, I forget.
Yes, yes.
What's the chance that a lot of very many people went Thursday, actually, early?
That was just his opinion.
I make it mostly approved.
Second.
Alcohol type.
Yeah. But I mean, it's just like every night, we either got a ballgame, or a practice, or cattle, or, I mean, it's just like.
Certified call-taking area population, local tax commission? I'll write it for that, too.
It has a map on there, and then it has our population, which, um, Sarah checked with, um, Dawn, all the population, and it has more. So we can change it, or we can just leave it as news, because we have it covered with the population that they have us down for, and then it has a map that's attached, and that needs to be.
Populations around Hubble County, right, and inmates are included.
Yeah, she showed me that the other morning.
So we had a site entered, or?
Yes.
I guess it's for?
The mapping for nine one. And it has, it has the map that is included, which. And then our population.
Of course, place has signed it, eh?
I think it's the last, the last one before the, uh, map.
Yeah, I was excited the other day.
Just under, or above, all three of them, the side.
Yeah, people say, well, your county's really growing, except it's all inmates.
I move for the approval.
Second.
Yeah, like I was staying on the next two.
You think you will?
Yeah.
You tell you'll call me a chicken.
Yeah, I sort of.
I already thought of that one, I made that thing, man, it's kicking heel.
Yeah, both of them.
I like the way the paper puts it in, or, all it says is, Chad Roach and Stane, he don't tell you why. I'm sure the horse, he was like, why is he emptying, I said, cause he's mad.
He's got bad attitude, you know?
Yeah, I probably said, no, he's not gonna be commissioner, and we're in foul.
They can't?
What do you want to do that make?
Heather has me every week, I tell her every week the same thing, you can't, you can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's state law, and, and really, I don't understand, because I understand from my district saying not allow you to.
Right.
Yeah.
Sell that, but I don't see why it affects on this printer.
I make it mostly approved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, any unforeseen business? Make it mostly adjourned.
Second.